Okay, I think it's time to start. Let's call the meeting to order and we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Dufer.
Present.
Councilman Peskew.
Here.
Mayor Prottempery Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
Thank you, we have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, we have our pledge of allegiance and invocation by Mayor Prottempery Leonard. Please stand.
Father in heaven, thank you once again for the gifts of life, your worship, your grace, and your prayer and blessing upon us here in this meeting that will come to be prophecies for you to further this fine city. I congratulate you to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now is the time for a public comment. We have two requests for public comment for items not on the agenda. One is Lori Ubersack. Please come forward. Welcome.
Welcome. It's good to be back around here. I'm Lori Ubersack. I live on Camelot Avenue here in Loma Linda. I've been very distressed about the amount of break-ins that have been going on in the neighborhood. And I live in a pocket where we seem to be getting hit quite often. Two doors down, across the street, across the street this way, behind me on the street. The most recent one on Friday afternoon was two blocks behind me. And one of the things that I find distressing is that the only way I've heard about these is word of mouth. So either that, or I have a Ring video doorbell. And sometimes in the neighborhood section, if they had it, they'll post a picture. One of the things I think we might be able to do better is to have some kind of notification system or meeting. You don't want to put a big public sign out and have the robbers coming and joining it. But if there's some way, I spoke to Councilman Daley about this, if like if he wanted to coordinate something and you needed a citizen to coordinate and set up, you know, neighborhood captains or something where we could all keep each other informed and know what we're looking for. You know, are we looking for a white car? Are we looking for an Asian male? Are we looking for somebody that comes knocking on the door? My neighbor and I call them the clipboard people. You get a clipboard person knocking at the door and then there's often a break-in. I understand they're going in the sliders in the back. So my neighbors and I have tried to keep the backlights on. We've tried to keep the gates locked. But that's information that would be very helpful. It's very helpful to know to keep yourself safe. It's also very helpful for law enforcement if we know what we're looking for. So I don't know if you have any ideas on that, or you'd be willing to coordinate with that. Mayor, I heard about your house too, so I know it's affected you, but it's getting really scary, especially when they're now entering when people are actually in the house.
Well, in my case, they found a suspect and a whole group of them, so.
They didn't get all of them apparently. I heard somebody else decided it was a great place to.
Yeah.
Yeah. And yeah, there's a nonstop flow of criminal element, I'm sure, but it would be nice to know at least. I mean, I know several years ago, the MO was they were breaking into the front door in the middle of the day. They were kicking front doors in. Now it seems to be backsliders.
Well, they break through backsliders and try to kick in doors.
Yeah.
In the back.
But I for one would like whatever information is out there. Like if I know it's backsliders, you know, me and my neighbors want to know that so we can make sure that the gates are locked. Every barrier you put up to them is one second more that stumbles them so they can be apprehended or just discouraged from that particular break-in.
If I could ask the city manager, I know several years ago, my wife attended a public safety neighborhood watch program here at the city and found it very useful. She and some of her buddies got our neighborhood organized. I don't know that we're so organized as we used to be. Do we still do that kind of public safety service?
Yes, as part of, we work with the Chamber of Commerce and we have that, I think it's twice a year. So, Conrad? And then we have that twice a year. So we're happy to invite you and your, this way your neighbor can get together and create the neighborhood watch program. So you give information to Barbara so we can.
Okay. And we even, me and my neighbors, we do try to talk. But, you know, it is helpful if you know what you're looking for and if everybody is on the lookout for, you know, particular car or particular pattern of car. We even confront people who like hang out on corners and we're like, hey, what are you doing here? We've had a lot of break-ins, so. And I know the police are very receptive to us always calling about anything suspicious.
Yes, if you give information to Barbara, we will contact you and.
Thank you very much.
It is, it is. I have the same Ring system and I get these notifications all the time.
Right.
And I, it's like, whoa, this is getting more and more, but I'm, but I'll, sometimes I just try to convince myself, well, maybe it's just that more and more people are getting the Ring, the doorbell videos and all that and we're just catch seeing more of it. But I don't know.
Well, I've heard more of it from word of mouth, just because it happened to a bunch of people around me. So my neighbors say, hey, the guy right behind me got broken, my friend two doors down got broken, you know, when the lady across the street a couple of years ago got broken. So, you know, we've, I've been hearing more of them almost on that. And then the one that happened on Friday, the only way I knew about that was I was contacted by law enforcement to get my Ring video.
Yeah.
Which is comforting to know that they have that access and know who has it so they're able to, you know, get the video footage and see what's around. So I think if we can coordinate a lot of those, it's helpful. And even when they're on the Ring where people just post things that, hey, there was a break-in, even if they don't have footage.
So you can also go to the sheriff's website and they post, every 24 hours, they post a log of all the calls for service.
Oh, okay.
In every jurisdiction. So you would just look at Loma Linda and it would show you all the calls for service for that previous 24 hour period. And I think there's a several hour gap, so it's not real time and it's on purpose, right? But you can see all the different calls. Not every call results in it being a righteous crime, but it gives you a pretty good idea.
And I do appreciate all of you increasing the patrols from two to three. I mean, I think that's great. Clearly, you can't be everywhere all the time, but, you know, as much as we can do. I think we're not utilizing all the resources we have and the citizens, while not law enforcement certainly have eyes and ears constantly.
Not to get political, but I would also ask that you do a little research. Look up things like Prop 47, AB 109. These were major, major revisions to our justice system that happened in the last couple of years that decriminalized a lot of things.
Was that like the mailboxes too? Because that became a massive.
And if you, if you talk to those fine gentlemen over there, which are good friends of mine, and they will affirm that we see now people just revolve, go in and out, in and out and out, because there's no consequence anymore.
Right.
Because we're a very progressive state and we don't want to.
Which has its benefits, but it has its downsides too. Anyway, thank you all.
I've been searching for the benefits. Can't find them.
I am told there are benefits, but yes, I think Loma Linda has been seeing a lot of the downside. And you know it's not your neighbors. It's a lovely, lovely neighborhood, lovely place to live with the nicest people you could be around, but, you know, there's, you don't have a wall around the city and gated access, so.
It's nice to see you back. We haven't seen you for a while.
Thank you, yeah.
Sorry that you're here under these circumstances, but on that note, I just have a quick question of the sheriff. Has there been a spike recently, or are we just seeing a particular neighborhood suddenly being hit more than usual?
The best thing that I could say is that this was just kind of an isolated incident. We had a crew of individuals who were targeting this area. It wasn't also just this area, though. The same group of individuals that we have in custody were also hitting residences in Ranch Cucamonga, Chino Hills, Redlands. So they're going all over the place.
So we feel that we actually apprehended the ones that may have been responsible for this neighborhood?
Well, we have several in custody at this point on the original series. And then just last Friday, we actually had two more burglaries occurred. So those are the only ones in kind of what we're viewing as a new series that began. And hopefully it'll be contained to that and, but we're monitoring the situation and.
I would recommend that since, as we all know, that technically we're not supposed to really spend a lot of time talking about this because it's not on the agenda, but maybe we might want to put an item on the agenda and kind of reengage some effort to probably recruit folks who might want to be part of a neighborhood watch program. I know we have some, but maybe we need to reengage that and deck the next level because as we all know, being proactive is going to help us. Maybe we're not getting hit really hard, but we might be getting hit sooner rather than later, so maybe we can be a little bit more proactive. There's not so much we can do with the sheriff, but maybe we as citizens can kind of band together and come up with some specific ideas that address your concerns about how to be best communicate. I mean, I was thinking out loud of passing off flyers and telling people, hey, you got, houses got hit, be aware, but at the same time, if you give too much information about.
Right. And you don't want it just sitting on the door where somebody's.
You know, it's a double edged sword as to how, you don't want to, you know, completely, how do you call it, alarm the public as to, oh my gosh, there's something going on, but at the same time, you want to get them engaged to pay attention.
You want to alert them.
So some of the things that we need to kind of discuss in more detail and come up with some good plans that may be able to help us, assist us, so.
What I realized was, when I spoke with Councilman Daley about it, he wasn't aware of a lot of these and he gets periodic updates from the sheriff's department. And he didn't even know all of what I was seeing just half a mile east of him, you know, really in the same neighborhood. So, you know, if you guys aren't aware, then it's hard to take action. And that's why I thought it was worth bringing.
But we do get a weekly report that, it's a pretty lengthy report, it's about 30 pages of all the calls, but it is so detailed that it doesn't give you a, you know, you can't just look at it and say, oh my gosh, we're suddenly seeing more than usual. It's kind of, that's why I had to ask him, because there's just a lot of data that's getting calculated.
Right, right. You've got to see a pattern.
Address it specifically, so.
I would say that if you watch that media summary, you'd be very surprised because this, although this is a safe, quiet town, stuff happens here.
Oh, no doubt. But what media summary are you talking?
I would also tell you that probably, and I haven't looked at the numbers, there are probably several burglaries a week that occur in this city, if not once a day. That's the reality of the world. So you may only know of a couple of them.
Right.
That are happening in your neighborhood, but the reality is, citywide, they're probably happening quite a bit. And so, yeah, and the thing about neighborhood watch, so we've got some really great neighborhood watch coordinators and programs and half the problem is they tend to start out and they go for a little while and then they kind of peter out, so.
Well, that's what we need to reengage.
Sounds like we have a.
Right. And if the neighborhood watch is, or I don't know how it's set up, but if they're talking to each other, then it trickles down because one person can't get it to everybody. But I appreciate the time and it's good seeing all of you again. Thank you.
I just wanted to add too, if I could, that one of the bright spots that we saw during that group of burglaries is for several weeks, we had a variety of our deputies and our detectives out, schedule adjusting and doing kind of mobile surveillance and hoping to run into these guys while they were doing one of these. And one of the experiences that they shared with me was is that the citizens of Loma Linda are no way apathetic. Our deputies were actually getting, were getting stopped and questioned by the citizens as they were driving through the neighborhoods because they didn't belong there and the people were right on top of them. So that's the good news, I think, in some of this, so.
If the average house is burglarized as frequently as mine, there would be six burglaries a day in our town. Okay, our next public speaker is Don Walter. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Don Walter and I know quite a few here. I have a smog business in Loma Linda on Redlands Boulevard. And recently, we've come under attack there, fire from the city government, making it pretty difficult to even do business on the premises anymore. Now, mind you, I know that it wasn't my business that was having all the problems, but there are some businesses there that were abusing their ability to park cars and we did have quite a few junk cars on the lot. But recently, the code enforcement person, Gil Garza's come in and he's sent a letter that says that you cannot have any abandoned vehicles on the lot, no unregistered cars on the lot, and that they're going to cite us $100 per car, $200 per car a second time, $500 per car the third time. They're going to tow them out of there. And, you know, the businesses there, there's seven different businesses and they all work on cars. And, you know, we don't really have control over when a customer brings a car into us, whether it has registration on it or not. And a lot of people bring them in without them because they want to get them fixed. And, you know, they're not running, they haven't been running for a long time, and when they bring them in, they have no registration on them. There has to be some kind of a change in the ordinance or something that, so we can, you know, we do have cars that come in, the businesses do have them where they have to work on them and, you know, it's not right that we can't work on, you know, a car that's not registered. The landlord happens to give us 30 days notice. There aren't 30 days to have a car there and after that, we got to get rid of it. You know, you can't have it on the lot more than 30 days. But the city now has said five days. You know, and actually, if five days, they're going to tow it or ticket it and tow it. But they don't even want us to have them there. We can't even lift a hood open outside of the business. Anything we do has to be conducted inside four walls. And, you know, and then you can't, you can't work on a car in a parking spot. But there's no regulation that says that anybody could show me or that you couldn't work on a car in a parking spot, because they're saying a parking spot is for parking cars for a limited time. They're saying you can't, well, like I say, you can't work on them outside the building, so Gil Garza came up and went to one of the businesses just last Friday and, or it was Thursday, Thursday I think it was, and he was, he said, I'm going to fine you $100 for each one of these four cars, to one of the other tenants there, because you have the hood open on it. And he says, you can't work on a car outside. But there's got to be something that the city can allow us to do. We've been there, I've been there 16 years and some of these other businesses have been there 18 years and, you know, we just haven't had that kind of problem before and now all of a sudden, they're coming down heavy on us and, you know, we need to have something in writing that says that we can, you know, what are the rules? Can we work on them outside the building? If so, how far? I used to have a Chevron station in Los Angeles, had it for 20 some years. And Los Angeles had a rule that said you can't work on a car more than 17 feet from the opening of the bay, which was reasonable. And they didn't allow us to open up a hood away from the building more than 17 feet and work on it. So, you know, I see the notice they have here, or the code, you know, for abandoned vehicles, 10 dot 34.
Can we see a copy of that? Or, I don't know if you have a copy.
I only have one.
We'll give it back, I'll give it back to you. This was the letter from the city?
No, I got that off your website.
Oh, okay. Do you have the letter?
The letter from the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably, the gentleman may be under the impression that the council can take some action tonight, and that is not the case. The city council, number one, cannot take action on any item that's not on the agenda, but number two, if this is a pending code enforcement action, there could be citations or hearings pending, which theoretically could be appealed at some point to the council and therefore it would be inappropriate for the council to involve itself at this stage of the proceedings. Council could ask staff to report back on the matter if you so choose, but beyond listening briefly to the comment from the gentleman, there's nothing the council can do this evening to address the matter.
Okay, I understand that. I was just wondering if there was something that you could, you know, it could be kicked around somewhere and then we could find out later about it?
Well, I'm going to ask that we get a report on what the rules are about that kind of mechanics premise and we'll go from there.
Okay. It just, you know, the abandoned vehicles almost seems like it shouldn't really pertain a lot to the kind of businesses that we have because we deal with it all the time.
Yeah.
There are ice mog cars and I get big motorhomes that come in there and obviously they won't fit inside the building and the state of California allows me to do them outside. So, like I say, I wasn't, nobody fined me or cited me or anything. I wasn't, you know, involved in that, but I feel like it's, you know, one of these times I could be. And my other six people that, you know, the people that work in the area there, I mean, they're all hit by this and they don't know what to do, you know. They can't work outside, so they got to work inside and they can't have abandoned vehicles or unregistered vehicles on the lot, you know, it just kind of ties their hands and we don't know what to do. So we need some help.
Thank you for bringing it to us. Like he was saying, the reason we can't do much is because we have to preserve our status as impartial judges if it comes to an appeal. So we can't do anything tonight, but we will investigate what's going on. We'll have the, we'll have the staff give us a report.
Okay, and there was one other thing. Are the businesses, like I had a lot of things stored for my house at my business. And the fire marshal, James Gray, he came in and, you know, he says, we're going to be doing a nitpick and fire inspection here next Tuesday, which was over a month and a half ago. And as far as I know, it's never happened yet, but he looked in my shop and he says, you know, or I said, well, I'm not too much worried. He goes, well, you ought to be. He says, he says, look at all those boxes you got on the stairway in there. And I said, well, there's a lot of boxes there, but they're not on the stairway. There's nothing blocking the stairway. He says, well, those boxes have anything in them? I said, some of them do, some of them don't. He goes, well, the ones that don't, they're a fire hazard, get rid of them. And then he looks up above my office area and I've got a lot of stuff stored up above there. And he says, I don't know what it takes to do a smog, but he says, whatever you have here that doesn't pertain to smog, get rid of it. You know, so, can we store things at our businesses or can't we? Or do we have to have a special permit to do that outside of what I have for automotive?
Well, we can't answer it.
You can come in and see me again. You and I discussed this last week. We've covered a lot of this ground already, so you can come in and see me again. I'll be here tomorrow and we can cover that ground again.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Conrad, I just had a quick question. Obviously, code enforcement is busy throughout the city for various things, but this is the first time that this particular issue's come up. Has then been something that's transpired in the last few months that has brought this issue to bear?
Yes.
Where, is it because we're seeing a lot more activity in some of these places that we normally don't see?
Without tainting the, whatever, the impartiality, there was an inspection of that complex. It's over on the far west end of Redlands Boulevard.
I see, and that, okay.
And in that inspection, there was a long, long laundry list of.
I follow.
Serious violations uncovered.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go to item number one. Public hearing, time extension request for PPD.
Time extension request, this is for the medical office building. You guys, we saw this two or three years ago. It's the vacant lot in front of the post office on Barton Road, 25915 Barton Road. Right here, Edison easement, Barton Road, the post office, Newport kind of that. And if you recall, there's the vacant lot there, surrounded by the post office, residential to the east, the Edison easement, and then Barton Road with the city yard and the mini storage and the new car wash across the street. So, the application was approved by city council on August 9th, 2016. We're sorry, we got an, it was approved, they're asking for an additional extension on the project. The project is currently expired, so it would be a nine month extension, but it expires six months from today because we're already three months expired. So this will allow the applicant to complete bidding and finishing his financing for construction. Apparently, construction drawings are complete and ready to go. We've met with the applicant's architect, who has told us that he needs six months, sorry, six months to get it completed. We did an environmental review of this with a mitigated negative declaration. There's no changes, significant changes in the project from what was approved previously. And so the extension does not require any additional review. Staff recommends, or that it is consistent with the general plan and there's no changes, so staff recommends approval of the extension for an additional six months from the time of approval, which will be a nine month extension. Thank you.
I move the staff recommendation.
We need to do the public hearing first, but keep that, hold that thought.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and we have one request from Stephen Murray.
Hi, I'm Stephen Murray, the architect for the project. Basically here to answer any questions that you may have. We are really appreciative of the staff and the way they've been working with us. The owner is working on some tenant stuff that is impacting how it's going to go together and so we're trying to get those things resolved and get that into place so that he has an easier run into the project. So basically, everything's approved and permit ready at this point in time. So it's just a matter of coming into compliance with some of the stuff he needs for the tenants.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, this is approved as a health facility, correct? Medical office building. So I assume when you're talking about tenants, you'll have licensed healthcare professionals in there only?
Yes. He's currently looking at putting an ambulatory surgery center on the first level of that with some other related things on the second floor. So yes, it's definitely medically related.
Thank you.
Are there, not a question for you, but more for staff. Are there any implications from the fatal pedestrian accident with.
Are there any implications from the fatal pedestrian accident with regard to our approval of the traffic flow situation?
No.
Okay. Okay, so what's the pleasure of the, are there any other public speakers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any motion from the council?
Move this...
I'll second.
Move the staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. You have your extension. And we move to our consent calendar. I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, no polled items. There's a motion and a second for items two through eight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We have our old business, item nine, Council Bill O dash two thousand nineteen dash zero five, second reading and roll call vote, amending and adopting the building code.
I'll move the item, and at that point, do we need to do by title only, or just...
Yes. Unless you want to hear the whole thing.
I'll move the item and read by title only.
Okay.
It's entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, State of California, Amending Chapters fifteen point zero four, fifteen point zero eight, and fifteen point six zero of the City of Loma Linda Municipal Code pertaining to buildings and constructions by adopting the 2019 California Building Code, including the 2019 California Building Code volumes one and two, 2019 California Existing Building Code, 2019 California Historical Code, 2019 Energy Code, 2019 Administrative Code, 2019 California Referenced Standards Code, 2019 California Residential Code, 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, the 2019 California Electrical Code, 2019 California Plumbing Code, 2019 California Mechanical Code, the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, and the 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. And you may vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item ten, California Fire Code. Couple of first readings.
Are they both first readings? Just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Oh, no.
So, these are really second reading?
They're second readings.
Okay, so they are, okay, so that, so, because I saw that second reading said for today, so we are doing this. So, it's similar to the first item, except that it's second reading. So, if it's okay with the mayor, I'll go ahead and move Council Bill, if I can read it, zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-six, and read by title only, and also move Council Bill two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-seven, and move, and move by title only, roll call vote.
Do we need to have the roll call votes separated?
Yes.
Well, just in case, just in case someone wants to do a split vote.
We could do them separately if, if you'd like.
Probably should. So, we'll do them, we'll start with ten A.
I made the first motion, I guess we need a second.
Yeah, we need a second for both, and then we can vote on them separately. Okay, there's a second. Let's start with A.
Okay, Council Bill O twenty nineteen dash zero six, it's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, adopting and amending the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code, adopting and amending the 2018 edition of the International Fire Code, and repealing Chapter fifteen point two-eight of the municipal code. And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, item B.
Pardon? Do we do the second one?
Yeah.
Did you show your red, item number A?
I didn't hear the wooey. Did you mention the wooey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Council Bill O dash twenty nineteen zero seven, titled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, adopting and amending the 2018 edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There's no new business. Are there any reports of councilmen?
No report, but a question. What's the scheduled completion date for the car wash?
They want it last week, but they're not ready yet because of landscaping and then what else they have for long?
They, they told us they're going to be ready two weeks ago. But just kind of walking around and looking at it, they're probably two or three weeks out yet.
Okay. Just curious.
And if anybody's watching public notice, I think you might have brought it to our attention, but just to make sure everybody's aware of, they're closing off Mountain View over off where the railroad track is. It, it's not really in Loma Linda, but it's probably going to impact us because people may go around and go onto Richardson, so we may see additional traffic. Unfortunately, it's a long time.
Is it going to affect all of those Amazon trucks?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So, I noticed that it, it was blocked off when I was going to work one morning, and then when I came back, they were flagging people through.
Yeah, so it's, I don't know exactly, yeah.
Well, what, what, what happened over the weekend, the gas company is jacking bore their pipe underneath the railroad track and the channel, and it hit our twenty-inch water main.
Oh.
So, we're working on it right now.
So, is it right, same location there?
Yes.
Really? I see, so, okay.
After the gas relocate their line, then the railroad's supposed to be stopped working on the track, and then IVDA is working on widening the street all the way from the channel all the way to the, the bridge at the crossing San, Santa Ana River.
Were they in the wrong place, or was the USA labeled wrong?
I think it's labeled the wrong place.
Okay. Any reports of officers? Okay, then the city council itself.
I wanted to just thank JARB and staff. They provided assistance at the last week's or two weeks ago's airshow. Some of the staff members helped with some of the teardown, and we greatly appreciate it. And by the way, the airshow was another success this year. Although, as I said every year, I hope it doesn't happen again, because if it does happen again, it means that our airport is really busy and we can't afford to do an airshow. So, the fact that we have an airshow tells you that we're not quite busy enough. But we are getting busier, so you're actually going to see a little more traffic over the Christmas holiday season. And just found out this week, although it's not official, that we're actually going to be having weekly flights that's going to move horses. Those flights were happening twice a week in Ontario, and Ontario has gotten so busy that they've diverted some of that traffic towards us, so now we're getting at the airport, which is good for us. So, anyway, I just want to thank JARB for that.
Are these quarter horses or Arabian stallions?
I'm not sure. There apparently, a lot of them are racehorses, but they're also just horses that get moved from the east coast to the west coast. And there's a, an airline just specializing in horses, and they come to Ontario, and now they're coming to San Bernardino. I know. I thought that they would be, yeah. So, they must be shipping them someplace else, because it's not there, that's for sure.
Okay, so the city council is adjourned, and we go to our housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items? Seeing no takers, we'll go to our consent calendar. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Any chair member reports? Hearing none. Any reports of officers? Hearing none, we're adjourned. City council as the successor agency, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any items, anything to be discussed by the public on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we move to the consent calendar. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.